I wonder if Andy found this for me. I don't want to see that on a video. My dad might be talking to you.
Good morning, I would like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission 10 o'clock a.m. meeting of October 26, 2021. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise for the invocation and pledge.
O merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the row.
District Two, Commissioner Moore.
Here.
District Three, Commissioner Starkey.
Here.
District Four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Here.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District One, Chairman Oakley.
Here.
Okay, now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any item coming before the Board and items to be placed on future Board agenda or other business under their purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those that are here in person. Then, we will take public comment from those who have pre-registered on WebEx link and are currently on cue. This format does not waive the request for when you address the Board. Comments are not directed toward any Commissioner or team member, but are directed toward the issues. This provides mutual respect between the Board and members and the public. For WebEx and in-person participants, after you state your name and address for the clerk, the timer will start, and after two minutes, a beep will sound, letting you know that you have one minute remaining. After your time is up, two beeps will sound, indicating that your three minutes are up, and it is time for you to end your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. The following people have signed up to speak in person. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair, I have six individuals that are assigned up in person, and I will call the first three so that you know either order. Drew Bocchetti, Pastor Troy Peterson, and Pastor Danny Fields.
Good morning. Thank you, I'm here again in place of you. I'm asking again to please, I'm sorry, Andrew Bocchetti, 6820 Nara Street, Newport Ritchie, Florida, 34653. I'm asking again to please address the septic problem. The Florida Department of Health has come out again blaming the landlord, which may very well affect rent for not only myself, but this may affect others in the future. We, the people, are already dealing with enough stress as it is. I recommend try helping the people. It was also mentioned that the street drainage county problem is already not working correctly. It had already been redone once. Not only the drainage was just recently put in, but the street had been repaved recently. So money not spent, QA was not done. I guess that spending tax dollars is foolishly wise. I still have not received any kind of communication of any kind of septic policy to be put in place at all, and you're welcome for serving my country and God bless the USA, how you have my time.
Thank you.
Good morning, Pastor Troy Peterson. I pastor at 8114 Leo Kid in Port Ritchie. Once again, I'm here addressing, praying in Jesus' name for the invocation. I've been praying about this for quite some time. Two weeks ago in Dade City, I felt the Lord was telling me just to be still and to pray. But today, I have a couple other pastors with me, and I just want to share a couple of scriptures. First one in John 16, Jesus Christ declared, "Most assuredly I say to you, whatever you ask in my Father, in my name, the name of Jesus Christ, He will give you. Until now, you have asked nothing in my name." That is a bold statement from Jesus Christ. And what I'm seeing from right now, this point forward, I don't see any prayer invocation with Jesus' name in it. That's why I'm here. And so, what I'm asking is that the Board would approve me and a group of pastors that I would choose. If I could not make it, I would appoint somebody to come in that I know is going to pray according to the Word of God. And then Jesus says, "Ask and you will receive, that your joy may be full." In 1 Timothy, chapter 2, we see the Apostle Paul writing to his student Timothy. He says, "Therefore I exhort, I exhort, first of all, that supplications." What's a supplication? A supplication is a specific heartfelt petition or needs. We have a lot of them here in Pasco County. Amen? Prayers and intercessions. "Giving thanks be made for all men, for kings and all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and reverence, who desires all men to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth." Jesus is the way, truth, and life. The only way to the Father is through the Son, Jesus Christ. And so that's that truth that I'm here to share with you today. But in verse 5, it says, "For there is one God and one mediator between God and men, the man Jesus Christ, who gave himself as a ransom for all." And then in Matthew 6, "And when you pray, do not use vain repetitions as the heathen do, for they think that they be heard by their many words." When you look at them vain repetitions, is exactly what your invocation at the beginning of the Commissioners' meeting is doing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, can I address the speaker?
You may.
So, in September of 2003, the former county attorney was asked the question about invocations. That's what led to what the clerk reads every morning. The federal law with regard to praying in County Commission meetings has not changed, and in fact, one of your fellow counties on the East Coast has taken the case up in 2019. The 11th Circuit affirmed all the case law that basically says you can't have secular prayer. They, the Brevard County Commission was doing something very similar to what the pastor suggests, where they had pastors, preachers, rabbis on call to come in and pray before the County Commission. It was found to violate federal law.
Our rights are by God, not federal law.
So, my advice to the Board would be to continue the practice that we've adopted.
Okay. You can't talk from the audience. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Name and address.
Am I ready? Okay, my name is Danny Fields. I live here in Pasco County. My address is 7430 Gimbel Lane, Newport Ritchie, Florida, zip area 34653. I'm here about the same thing Pastor Troy is, because I'm pastor and I'm also with somebody who cares Pasco County. Now, Troy, he read a bunch of scriptures here, so I'm going to focus on what was said when we opened up here. We talked about the Creator. Well, that Creator, and then we go into the Pledge Allegiance, which in God we trust. Well, that God is Jesus Christ. And so, I'm here to just thank you. I know these are a lot of decisions. I would like to see the faith-based church and government work together in this community, and I know that is your heart, to establish all the programs and things that we need to do together in unity. We might not agree on everything, but we could come together and figure out, by the Word of God and by the counsel of God, how to do this. So I will quote a scripture, and it says in John 14:6, and Troy closed it out with this, saying, "Jesus is the way, the truth, and the life." Now let me establish government from God's point, like you hear some of the people back here saying. It says in the book of Acts, starting in 46 there, but if you back up, it talked about Moses was given a law, and our laws was founded as a Christian nation on the government of God as Christian nation, okay? Then it talked about Joshua there, how Joshua then was to go and govern the nations that was doing things that wasn't by God's government and laws. And so, the main scripture there for me is says, "That what house will you build for me, saith the Lord?" And that house is individual, that's a home, that's a husband and wife, that is children, and that is our government. So, I'm not here to beat up on you. I love you, I respect you, I don't agree with all your policies all the time, but I'm here to work with you, and I'd like to see the name of Jesus be lifted up like it was founded on, and thank you for your service and your time. Pleasure, everyone, in Jesus' name.
Thank you, appreciate your comments.
The next three that are signed up is, I'm probably not going to pronounce this correctly, Dale Biagiole, sorry, probably did not do a good job on that, thank you. And then Natalie Cronin, followed by Gail Schwedberg.
Could I give one of these papers to, I don't have enough, but I would like you to follow along to you so that you can see what I'm talking about.
Move to receive and file.
Got a motion, receive and file. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. You can hand them to, ma'am, right over here. Thank you, ma'am. And could you state your name and address for the record first and then?
Just pull that down, pull the mic down, there you go.
I live at 9230 Stock Trail in Newport Ritchie. And I'm here very nervously because I saw on my computer yesterday something about a Newport Ritchie woman killed crossing Little Road. I have a quadriplegic daughter. She happens to live on Embassy Boulevard. She's on the other side with Barrington, away from Winn-Dixie. When she comes out her driveway, out of the road with her wheelchair, she has to go across Little Road, no, sorry, Embassy Boulevard to get down to Little Road or anything along the way. She has to cross in front of Barrington, she has to go in front of the park, Ritchie Boulevard, whatever, both going in and going out. The bus stop is there as well, and also there's an entrance exit over there by Winn-Dixie and another one by the bank. She cannot go along the Embassy Boulevard on her side of the road because there is a huge tree right on the sidewalk, and it's kind of lifted in like this, and if she tries to get over it, she's going to land in the street. So I have pursued, because she was hit by a car already on that same area, I have pursued the traffic people to help me fix some of those sidewalks, and I was told that from Little Road to Moorhead is only the sidewalks that the county is responsible for. Everybody that owns land along the way is responsible to fix the sidewalk. There's no way they're going to do it for one person. So she's got to go out. As a matter of fact, she doesn't have to go out, she only goes out when she's with somebody, because she's scared to death of being hit again. The guy had a blown-out tire, she was thrown from her chair, and whatever. So anyway, I'm here, excuse me, I'm here to ask that you help me get the sidewalks fixed so she can at least get from her home to be independent, which we worked for for so many years. I thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am.
Are you gonna, someone gonna talk to her? Where is the site, where was this location of the?
Right between Christine and my district.
Yeah, so you guys are going to look into it?
Colleen, would you reach over?
Okay, good.
Mike, scan her information now. Thanks. Name and address for the clerk.
Hello, yes, my name is Natalie Cronin. I live in 5111 Amulet Drive in Newport Ritchie. So, hello, everybody. I'm here today about, well, there was an incident that came to my attention. It's called this company, it's called Paul Corporation, and they have decided that they want to mandate this vaccine. Well, I know that I am writing the governor, I know that I am writing our representatives, I know that they're calling a special session on just that issue. However, I also know that people that are in this company, they are also doing these things, but if company, if people that are working in a company that is doing this, some of them will be coming to you and contacting you about these issues. What I would ask is that on top of us also writing the governor, writing our representatives, calling them, et cetera, I would also ask that you all, as elected officials, also do that, it might have some extra weight, and if you came out, you know, being seen to fight for our jobs, we're more inclined to fight for yours. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning. My name's Gail Schwedberg, 4917 Largo Terrace, Newport Ritchie. I'm not going to bring up any of the issues with Green Key per se, because we've all been over that several times here. A couple things that I do want to mention are, at this point now, about eight months ago, and as recently as a week ago, we have had water breaks in the pipes. Public Works has come out and repaired them, put new valves, not valves, put new covers on them. The one I'm speaking of on Largo Terrace, and the other one just within the week over on Edgewater. So what's happening now are the pipes are, and we know this, the pipes are all starting to deteriorate, and we're going to start and get more and more of those breakage. Another thing I wanted to mention, and I usually talk when I am based on facts, so it's something that I see or I learn about, okay? So this is coming from a second party, a reliable party, but there was mention of the reclaimed water from the water plant on Sea Forest and Main Street dumping reclaimed water into the, I guess it would be the bayou. I heard this about a week ago as we were passing out flyers about the upcoming November 2nd meeting. It was from somebody very reliable, but again, it wasn't told to me. So I think that's something of concern. You know, if you're dumping all that reclaimed water, first of all, why would you be doing that? Is that something that they do? And if not, it should be looked into. So those are the only two topics I wanted to bring up. I know that Public Works has been out and, you know, taking pictures and checking the areas and everything. So we're hopeful that we're going to be getting on the same page as far as drainage repairs and everything that we need done in the Green Key area. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments.
If my assistant, Colleen, let her get her information, or I'll set up a meeting with you, and I'll give you a little more information what's going on. She's coming up right there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that's all I have, that's signed up.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at public comment this morning that has not signed up? I thought I saw a lady before, there you go. Name and address for the clerk.
Julia Bartunick, 2645 Meadowah Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida, 34655. And I would just like to speak to continuing to keep the morning prayer as stands due to the fact that there are 6,000 people a month moving to Pasco County, and our diversity is growing in all respects, including with many religions that already exist in this county that are going to continue to grow within the Christian communities, the Jewish communities, the Buddhist communities, Muslim communities. There are many diverse branches and sects and denominations within those communities of faith and temples, so I think we need to keep it simple and keep it as stands to avoid litigiousness. Thank you.
Name and address.
Brian Paris, 7401 Allison Street, Newport Ritchie, Florida, 34668. I actually disagree with that, just because people move here, we shouldn't bend our values to anybody else. If people want to come here, we should be able to speak the way we want and how we want. You're coming to our town, we're not going to bend our knees to anybody. This is, this town is, you want to come here? It's just like our country. You come to our values, our Judeo-Christian values, our constitutional republic, and our family American values. We've already had our, a family house has been destroyed by allowing different ideologies to come in here. We cannot allow it. If we, we should put Jesus Christ in it, you know? I mean, I'm not perfect by any means, and I'm not here to judge by any means, but, you know, we are just good American values. If people want to come here, you know, come our way. It's just like the American language, English, you know? That's just the way it is. You go to other countries, you have to go to their values, you know? I'm not going to go to Mexico and live and say, hey, you guys got to speak English now because of me. No. We're in America, we have English, our Judeo-Christian values, you know? God is the Creator. However people want to pray, they can use it, and that's all. Thanks.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else that has not signed up wish to speak at this time? Anyone on WebEx?
We do have one individual on WebEx. Two had registered, but only one has connected. We have Nancy Gray is in the queue.
Okay.
Ms. Gray, if you would like to state your name and address for the record, and then you may proceed.
My name is Nancy Gray, and I live at 8502 Dock Road, Newport Ritchie, 34654. Before you again regarding Deer Lake, I've emailed your offices and spoken to you at previous meetings regarding this. Wells Fargo at Little and Ridge is permitted to drain their roof and driveway into the lake as their grandfathered in. The water washes down the hill, eroding it and flushing dirt near stormwater into the lake. Lake overflows on our properties on Adonis and Grave. The water came up over 140 feet into our yards in August, and it's still up. It's going to take six to nine months for it to go down on its own, just in time for the vicious cycle to start all over again. As I emailed you yesterday, tax records show the lake belongs to Pasco County. I've been told by an assistant that Pasco will never maintain this lake. Pasco requested and received an emergency permit from Swift Mud to pump private lakes and drains through Austin August and pump for the month, keeping the water off of their properties. It never came out of the lakes, but Pasco won't pump its own lake and remove the water off the residents' properties on Grave and Adonis? The Florida Administrative Code prohibits water runoff from being directed onto another's property. Why is this water on our property? Swift Mud contacted Public Works by email, saying that I requested the lake and attached the 2019 emergency permit. Why won't the county pump the lake? We've lost thousands of dollars in plants, trees, and crops since August, and none of the residents have had use of their backyards, but we're paying property taxes on this land. Why are we being penalized? Who's running the stormwater and Public Works departments? Is it public infrastructure, our county administrator, or the county commissioners? It appears as so, they're accountable, no one. Please hold these departments accountable and get this questing accounting pump down the lake and off of our properties, clean out the lake, and come up with a permanent solution to the problem. Add the curbs at Wells Fargo, as Ms. Fitzpatrick suggested, come up with another idea. Swift Mud has already determined that the county can get a permit to run the runoff into the drains at Ridge and Little and over the county retention pond. It'll prevent the runoff from being dumped into Deer Lake and Deer Lake flooding its residents. Please give us our properties back. We're looking forward to a resolution. I thank you for your time, and I invite any questions. I'd love to answer them, but no one will contact me. Do you have any questions? Just don't.
Is that all your comments? Or she's been cut off?
Yes.
She has not been cut off.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Okay, that's the last person?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I do have one person that the car broke down that will speak, but I'm going to allow her to speak at 1:30 when we come back after lunch. All right, this time we close the public comment at this time, and we move on to our resolution. Madam Clerk.
Is anyone here for Friends of Library Week? Please stand and come to the podium. Mr. Chair, you want me to go ahead and proceed?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number 22-005, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, proclaiming the week of October 17 through October 23, 2021, as National Friends of the Library Week in Pasco County. Whereas the Friends of the Pasco County Library System, Inc., is a not-for-profit organization of citizens who share a passionate commitment to a strong public library system. The branch-specific Friends Group, along with the county-wide Friends, strive to build a strong relationship between the Pasco County Library System and the community through volunteering, fundraising, and advocacy. And whereas, the continued support of the Friends emphasizes the fact that our library system remains a cornerstone for the community it serves, while providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and to connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to present. And whereas, the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library system gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including storytime, summer reading, arts, culture, and technology programs. And whereas, Ross Fenton, President of the Friends of the Pasco County Library, Inc., along with all the Friends, work persistently to show their support for the library system and are vital members of our community. The Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library system sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and betterment of our community. And whereas, the Friends of the Pasco County Library System are always welcoming new members. Those wishing to become a Friend of the Library may contact their local library branch to learn more. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said Board hereby proclaims October 17 through October 23, 2021, as National Friends of the Library Week in Pasco County. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 26th day of October, 2021.
Move approval.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Welcome. Thank you for all that you do. We appreciate all the work you do, and it does mean something, so.
Thank you for your support of our library system.
Ms. Fenton, could you come to the mic? Thank you.
Thank you for your, thank you for your support of our library system. It means a great deal to us, especially with the expansions that we're experiencing. And I want to thank the Friends because they are an invaluable asset to the county. They provide so many wonderful programs and supplies and experiences to our citizens. It's just beyond belief. We couldn't function without them. They are marvelous. Thank you to the Friends.
Yeah, the Board of County Commissioners certainly appreciates all that you do.
Thank you. And I've given you each a brochure that kind of gives you an oversight of all the things we do, and in that is a bumper sticker that says, "I love my Pasco Library." So please, put it on your bumper. I have one on my card, on my car, and people actually stop me and ask me about the library. So I encourage you to do that. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, so before we go down, and we have a big group here today, so I'm thinking we might need to do the tiers today.
Yeah.
Right? But we do appreciate everything the Friends of the Library do, and got to know so many of you throughout the years, and it's great to see you out in the community and great to see your support. And libraries, like you said, just aren't for books anymore. If you look at all we have within our libraries, the makers If you look at all we have within our libraries, the maker spaces, the robotics, the sewing, woodworking, and just the ability to go in there as a entrepreneur and learn and work on the computers and start a business. I mean, that's what it's all about. I spent so much time in the libraries when I was a child myself, riding my bike to the libraries. That's where we went. And that's where we gathered. And the new spaces that, you know, your team and Kathy and her team have put together are something that's going to be, you know, obviously valuable for years and years to come. So we're very appreciative of each, every one of you. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
If we could come, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I just wanted to say my, my staff got me a library card for my birthday.
I, I wanted to add, we have a recording studio.
Oh, you have one, those now too?
Boy professional with an engineer. So if anybody is interested in promoting a program--
Well, I think Commissioner Oakley has his new country album, he can--
There we go! That would be wonderful. It's called Studio H, and it's fabulous.
Yeah, that's his new country music production company.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Mariana?
Thank you. And I just want to thank the Friends as well. You know, way back when, when we had all the cuts that were going on, and it was at Centennial Library that was at stake, and what was going to happen. Compared to that moment to where we are now, is a testament to your dedication and definitely made this county a better place for us. So, thank you all.
Yeah.
What, you want to, guys want to come down? Or, I don't know if it would stagger?
One other thing, we got to thank the citizens of Pasco County. Because the bond issue that we got that does a lot of the renovation of, of the buildings and the new buildings we got coming for the library system, they voted that in.
Yes.
I mean, so they're willing, also supporters of the library. So it's very good that we have those, you know.
You need to visit the new Starkey Branch, the Cultural Sector.
Yes, very nice.
It's beautiful. It's beautiful.
We're going to do a ribbon cutting with the orchestra one there. Okay. That's what we're waiting for.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
Yeah, let's, here, I think you're going to, we got a snagger? Okay, I think--
We'll stay up here.
Snagger, and then, I just need one person here. There's a charge. Everybody else can come in, just kind of gather around right here. We're going to try, if we do it this way, we can probably fit everybody in. Maybe, maybe not. If not, everybody, we can all load everybody up here.
Don't be afraid, come on. Don't be afraid to be toward the center. You're okay.
And this is why Andy warns you of the wide angle.
Yes. Made sure.
Are we fitting in?
Can you, here, hold this with me.
Oh, I was going to say, I'm back.
Here, put your finger. There you go.
Did you get Kathy in the picture? No, wait. I'm sorry, I'm going to go back now because--
Yeah.
I'm going to defer to Ryan's photo because--
Everybody look at Ryan.
When you're all ready, we have one more.
Everybody look at Ryan. Ryan's right there, everybody smile.
Look at Ryan.
All right, everybody. One, two, three. Everybody is in. That's amazing.
And then I'll look at Andy and Derek.
And you're all three feet wide from the white line, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if it works that way.
Anybody else out there?
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great to see you all.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
I cut them myself.
They were just going like this.
This is me trying to do this. Doesn't turn out well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Now's the time for the consent agenda, and I have a poll sheet with items C2 withdrawal, C4 pull and revise, C30 withdrawal, and C32 withdrawal. So I entertain a motion for the rest of items.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0 on all consent items. Now we go back to the poll sheet, and C4.
C4 is a county attorney item. It's approve additional purchase authority for Barnett and Chistoli, PLLC. The previous memorandums of funding authorization by the Board were not added, uploaded into Civic Clerk. There were three of them, and they've been distributed to you this morning.
Move for approval. Roger Rogers.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0. That ends the consent items agenda. We now move on to regular items. And I think we, um, I think we move on to item 54, I believe.
R54.
Roger Green, 7853 Gunn Highway, Tampa, Florida 33626.
Yes, sir. Welcome.
Morning.
Good morning, good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I just want to say that I am so happy to be here this morning. It is so good to see, see you all. I have an item here that I'd like to present to the Commissioners.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to receive and file. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, this is terrifying. And then you open up, there's a skull in there. Well, I guess this is good for Halloween.
Getting close to Halloween.
On the clip. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, well, good morning to everyone. It is certainly a pleasure to be here. Again, my name is Roger Green, and I am the Director of FIRST. Many of you know what FIRST is. Some of you that do not, it's the Forensic Institute for Research, Security, and Tactics. And we are part of the Sheriff's Associate, the Sheriff's Office. And this morning, what I like to do is just give a brief of what, some of the wonderful operations that are taking place right here in our own backyard, and just some of the wonderful endeavors that we are privileged to be a part of, just to give an update. So we have a few slides that we're going to show. We're not going to go into all the details of it, but I'm going to try to give you just a little bit diagnostic understanding of what it is that we're doing, and some of the wonderful things that are taking place here. So what, what are we doing? Our mission, our mission statement says, "Creating safer communities by transforming public safety." And this is being done through research, through education, and innovation. There's a number of different things that, there's a lot within that mission statement. Many of you that do not know, and on our last slide, we talked a little, little bit about this. This project started off with the Forensics Body Farm. As many of you know, we call it our forensics field. We are privileged to have one of only eight forensics body farms in the entire nation that's active. And it's right here in the county. A part of that whole initiative, we have some other disciplines that are tied to that. We had a greater vision that, that was spearheaded obviously by our sheriff and our leadership. And under that leadership, there were some other disciplines that came out of that. Cybersecurity, intelligence, canine, human, which, and under the intelligence umbrella, human trafficking, and some other, other areas. Leadership, tactics, and, you know, then also our urban search and, uh, urban search and rescue rubble pile. And we're going to talk a little bit about that. What does this mean and what has transpired to date? We've had, it's a collaboration, just so you all understand, it's a collaboration between academic practitioners and the private sector to develop a state-of-the-art research and development center. So I'm here to give an account of those, some of those endeavors, some of those practitioner-based relationships, and some of those programs that are already moving forward, even without our buildings being completed at this time. But we are pleased to, to be able to have some of those programs taking place and moving forward strong, and really leading the charge in some of these different areas. So we're excited about that. This, the map that you're looking at is the, is the layout that we currently have for the, for FIRST. As you see on the, the furthest west side of that, of that map, you see where it says FIRST. That is our second body farm that is just, just under 10 acres there that we have. And we have a partnership that we've created with Florida Gulf Coast University, Florida International University, the University of Florida. So we are privileged to have, you know, three, three of the, the top forensic anthropologists within the state that are assisting us with that program. We have a donation program that, that encompasses that, a number of different research endeavors, which is giving us the opportunity to bring economic development to the area through partnerships of different companies. So that is a strong push, and we're excited about some of those, some of those opportunities that are taking place, and some of the things to come, just in those different lanes, and we'll talk a little bit more about that later. Just adjacent to that, you'll see the USF Body Farm. As you all know, that, that relationship will be with USF occupying that space will be ended at the end of 2022. At that time, we will then take, take over that, that, that plot of land and continue the expansion of the body farm, which you see just adjacent to that. Our, our current buildings that we have, we have two buildings that are just about completed. And we're looking for those buildings to be completed by the end of this year. Our training building, also our Canine Center of Excellence. So as you see, just off the main road there, Central Avenue, as soon as you come in, we have what we call our Canine Center of Excellence, where we have a 25, a new 25, 25 dollar kennel. We have a veterinary science building, some wonderful, wonderful partnerships that we've, we've created through that with some of our top veterinary, veterinary medicine scientists across the country. And we've also have been working heavily with all of our military working dogs, and having some of those trainings to help us to determine and to figure out ways, what does it take to, you know, to, to extend the longevity of the use of, of canine working dogs? And, and some of the challenges that we have here with heat, doing the research that supports those endeavors, and then giving, giving us an opportunity to be able to create new and innovative opportunities as it relates to technologies. So that means the use of drones, the, the use of thermal imagery, the use of heat sentry, different biometrics that allow for us to place those on, on the animals, for those animals to do, to be better taken care of. So those are some of the things that are taking place right here in our own backyard. And I say this, you know, and I, I think sometimes we don't, I want everybody to understand what we have here. We are privileged to have, there's, there's only three FEMA Level 1 Urban Search and Res, uh, Urban Search and Rescue Rubble Piles here in, in the state. We have one of those on location.
I'm looking for my photo when I climbed all over that pile of rubble.
Yes. And we have the body farm at the same location. In addition to that, we have a Canine Center of Excellence. In addition to that, we also have the training building, which will accommodate all of these disciplines with the partnerships that have been created, you know, since our, since our infantry. In addition to that, our intelligence building, which gives us the opportunity to do different studies and to understand what is, what's happening as, as it relates to human trafficking. So we've spearheaded an initiative. On, on FIRST, we have one of our partners, St. Leo University. Kathy Pearson is here. She's actually sits on the, on the board with our Mel Green Foundation in that great initiative. And we're, we're pleased to be driving that in, in getting the information out, education, information, and then the services that support survivors, as well as making sure that people understand what is, what actually is taking place in the human trafficking space. FIRST was responsible for leading the charge and creating the training for the state, for all of law enforcement. That was something that was directed, and we were chosen by our Attorney General's Office, and we were pleased to have delivered that timely and was able to spearhead that training for all of law enforcement, which is a mandatory training that all law, law enforcement has to take at least once a year. It has now expanded in its second phase for, for healthcare, as well as to hotels and, and different transit authorities. So your Uber drivers, your truck drivers, all of those now have access free of charge to be able to go on and look and take this training that basically gives them the information of what to do when you see these different items. And it's happening right here in our backyard. So we're pleased to be able to be a part of that, that initiative. So all, some of that is, is, is taking place right there. Will be driven out of that new building, which is scheduled to be completed the summer of 202022, which is our IOP building. In addition to that, and I know that we talked about the Urban Search and Rescue Rubble Pile. The Urban Search and Rescue Rubble Pile has been completed now for about, almost, almost a year now. And some of the, the, the great, the things that we benefited from, we've been able to train the canines that are part of our task force, our FEMA task force, that were instrumental in being a part of the Surfside Collapse as well as other, other different, you know, catastrophes that have taken place across this nation. Louisiana, through Georgia and northern Florida. So all of those FEMA dogs, at some point over the course of the last year, have been right here in, in the county, training at our facility. So we now have our own canine that is a part of the task force. They were, they were successful in completing and establishing themselves, along with a handler as, as a certified FEMA task force member now. So we're there now participating in that, and we're leading the charge in that direction with, with our canine facility. All of this that we're talking about, I'm going to go to the next slide. All of this that we're talking about, the goal is for us to look at gaps. What are the gaps that exist within these different disciplines, within these different areas of law enforcement and first responders? So when we talk about industry changes, things that are happening in terms of innovation, some of the, you know, for example, we, we are scheduled to have our first unmanned, public safety unmanned systems symposium, which is scheduled for the spring of 2022. What that entails is hundreds, hundreds of, of different companies, drones, and unmanned systems that will come right here to this area, show, show all of the different innovative techniques and some of the different innovations that are happening, and the industries that they're impacting. So many of you know that there's, there's an expansion that's exploding in real estate with the use of drones. There's a further expansion that's taking place in other industries that, those trainings that are necessary. And even putting together the CE's that support a more productive and accountable model is, is happening right here. So we're pleased to be able to spearhead some of that with our facilities. Again, we only have two buildings that are scheduled to be completed by the end of this year. Again, that's our training building, and then our Canine Center of Excellence. And the other buildings are scheduled to, to start, start the full build, which will take place after January, which is, encompasses our forensic science building, where, with, where we will be working in partnership with Florida Gulf Coast University, Florida International University, the University of Florida, and then other university partners that are interested in research. So we're excited about that. Again, here are the core disciplines that we're focusing on, forensic science, tactics, and human performance. We also did want to mention the human performance lane. We have been working closely with our Sports Coast team here. Adam and Gabby and Consuelo and their team here have been instrumental in, in supporting all of the efforts, working with the hotels, bringing, bringing, you know, attendees in preparation for these events. So we're excited about our next event, which is in December, where we're going to have a, it's called a human performance training, which is focused on first responders and nutrition, diet, dietary-- uh, diet, dietary, um, training, um, understanding the, you know, all the kinesthetics that, uh, that support, um, eliminating, um, all of the, the, the potential for, for, uh, injury, uh, and teaching them all of those different things, all within a model, uh, that, that could be duplicated and to be, to have that to, to be supported, uh, throughout the year, uh, with those, uh, support contacts. Uh, so that is, uh, taking place and we have that upcoming in December. Uh, so we're, we're excited about that as well. Again, uh, intelligence studies, another one of our core disciplines, working dogs, canines and public safety, unmanned systems, cybersecurity and leadership. Uh, so there's a, there's, we have a lot going on. Uh, I don't want to throw it all out to you, but, uh, I don't know if there's any specific questions, but I would love to host any question that you may have.
Roger, uh, I appreciate the report. It's, it's good to hear. Isn't this one facility? We're the only one maybe in Florida with all, that provide all this kind of training and all, and, and also only one of six in the United States, I believe?
We are the only facility of this kind that, in the, in the entire United States that has everything in one location. There are other facilities that have a focal point of just one of these items, uh, like tactics, uh, or emergency management. You'll hear of places like the Guardian Center, um, which is a little bit further north, uh, and some other facilities that, uh, have these types of, these types of endeavors, but no one facility that encompasses all of these items. So, uh, we are, we are, uh, driving, uh, driving in a lane that's niche, uh, and, and what it brings to, to the area, just in terms of, um, you know, we've had a, a, a great deal of interest from companies that are looking, uh, and interested in having a secondary site. Uh, so we've been working with, uh, with the EDC, uh, in preparation for that and understanding, um, some of the different, um, opportunities in terms of incentives, uh, that are available to them. And those are the things that, uh, they were currently working on as well.
Yeah, very good.
Um, what was the FASANO, where it said FASANO on the map?
Yes, that is, uh, that is with our, our Safety Town, uh, our, our Safety Town, um, initiative that it's focused on our leadership, our, our leadership lane. Uh, and that's, um, you know, a, a building that was, that was created out there for that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all so much. And, uh, we look forward to sharing any, any other future information. And please don't hesitate to reach out. Uh, we'll be more than happy to provide that for you.
Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you as well.
Our, our next item is, uh, R-55, but it's not 11 o'clock.
Oh, no, no.
I don't see Mr. Fasano here yet, do we?
No, I do not.
Okay. Well, uh, skip over R-55 and go to R-56. County Attorney.
If you get a chance, that, that rubble pile is very interesting.
Mr. Chairman, I have, uh, Patrick Moore, Senior Assistant County Attorney, uh, who is here based on your last meeting, um, to give you an update on enforcement options for roadway solicitation.
Okay.
Thank you. Good morning, Patrick Moore, County Attorney's Office. Um, so I was asked to come in here today to address with you the options related to our roadway solicitation ordinance. It's, oh, we often refer to as the panhandling ordinance. Um, essentially, I'm, I'm going to go through, uh, the options with you and ultimately I'm going to ask the board to authorize County Attorney's Office to amend our current ordinance and adopt some changes that are proposed, um, and direct board records to advertise it for public hearing when it's, uh, prepared, when it's ready. Um, so first I want to kind of, by way of a background, go through our ordinance with you, our current ordinance. So county's current, current ordinance was created, uh, for the purpose of protecting vehicular and pedestrian safety and the free flow of traffic. Um, this purpose hasn't changed. However, our current ordinance, it makes it unlawful to solicit, um, or attempt to solicit, solicit with the intent to receive a charitable donation, which is why it's often referred to as the panhandling ordinance. Um, as far as enforcement goes, historically, uh, direct citations haven't always been effective, um, which, uh, allow or cause the sheriff's office, uh, in, in, in an attempt to enforce the ordinance, uh, to utilize the county's, um, public roadway, public right of way trespassing ordinance. In other words, uh, sheriff's office, they see a violation of our current ordinance, the solicitation ordinance, and then it would allow them to trespass a person or persons from that location or an intersection. Um, however, due to recent case law, the sheriff's office, um, has decided not to enforce or utilize the ordinance, uh, in, in order to trespass someone, uh, moving forward. Um, in fact, that's, that's kind of across the board in the state of Florida. Law enforcement agencies across the state are deciding not to enforce many, uh, panhandling ordinances, um, in different counties as well. So this discussion is something that many other jurisdictions are also struggling with. Um, and, and the reason why this new case, uh, has caused this result is because it points out the infringement on First Amendment rights, um, specifically related to, to free speech as to, uh, requesting charitable donations and so on in, uh, public roadways. Um, so with that being said, um, I, I've looked at Lee County's recent ordinance that they adopted. I've attached that as exhibit, I believe it's exhibit, as exhibit B to my memo. And, um, essentially it's, it eliminates the solicitation aspect of it. It's been titled as dangerous use of public right of ways. Um, and it, and it has the same exact purpose as our current ordinance, uh, essentially the safety of traffic, free flow of traffic, pedestrian and, and vehicular safety. Um, what is different about this from our ordinance is it eliminates the concerns over the First Amendment and specifically it eliminates any mention of solicitation or panhandling as a basis of violation. Uh, and, and what this serves to do is, is eliminate traffic concerns beyond just simply panhandling, but incorporate, uh, violations that, uh, or, excuse me, actions such as, um, you know, physical interactions between vehicles, not limited to just the pedestrians, but, but also the vehicle, uh, drivers or occupants themselves. Uh, and it's also, uh, creates a violation for, uh, remaining in, in medians or other areas of the roadway. Uh, what that means is, is standing in a median, uh, I believe Lee County specifies, uh, of a certain size, whether it's paved or unpaved, uh, it's, if it's at least, if it's less than six feet wide, uh, it would be a violation, um, of the ordinance. And it does not make mention of solicitation itself.
Mr. Chairman, can, and, Patrick, let me jump in real quick here. Let's go back in history a little bit, because I know there's people watching from home today. Um, obviously the panhandling was very concerning to us, as it was probably a lot of the citizens that are sitting in the audience today. Um, it was happening across the county, continues to happen in some areas, and I'm sure Commissioner Starkey especially wants to, wants to talk about it.
Every intersection on 19.
So, but, you know, when I first came on the commission of 14, it was, it was discussed about on, you know, numerous occasions. So the board enacted, uh, the new ordinance. And I will tell you, I mean, for a while though, it looked pretty good. It was still happening in some of the areas, we know that. But it was looking pretty darn good. Um, not to knock newspapers, but at the same time, you know, that we had, we had, we had newspapers standing on every corner, trying to sling their, their newspapers everywhere there was and the medians and things. But it was a safety issue too. So there's the annoyance factor. There's the safety and the, but there's also the safety, the safety factor. People were literally getting hit by cars on 19. And it's not funny, but they were literally getting hit by cars on 19. But at the same time, we have so many people that were harassing our drivers on county roads. I got a email. I don't get a lot in Wesley Chapel, my district. I'm just being honest with you. I mean, after, you know, over time, it did get cleaned up pretty good. We get the people that move up and down 75. I call them your regulars. They're younger people and you'll see them moving up and down. They'll stay by 75 and 56 in that area, but they'll disappear for a few weeks and then they'll reappear again. Um, but I did get a call this weekend, not a call, an email this weekend, and I responded to the person this morning and told them what was going on, but they were seeing it around, um, certain areas of Wesley Chapel, um, becoming more prominent. Again, I guess the word is on the street that it's not able to be enforced like it was. Word spreads, people come back out again. Um, I know I'm being long-winded on this, but I want to make sure that people at home know that, you know, this is why we, why we enacted this before. This is why it passed before. I think, Commissioner Oakley, I think, were you here when we, it might have been right before you got here?
I was here in 16.
Well, it happened in, in 15. Would it happen, when did it happen?
Well, it was a progression.
Yeah, it was, but I don't know, Jeff, when did it, our final?
It's been a progression to finally saying not at all.
I'm not sure when it was. Yeah. And we finally just shut it out and said, no more. You know, we're, we're no leniency, no more. Um, so we understand what unfortunately what happens and, and, you know, a, a federal court judge, once again, thinks they know what's better for us than we know what's better for our community. And they step in and ruin it for, for everybody, right? And let's just be honest. I mean, it's, it's a fact. That's, that's what happened yet again. Um, they're trying to set precedent for local governments, you know, closest to the people. Um, so now we pay the price for it. So we're talking about options.
Right.
All right. But we, I think we, Patrick, to help us out on this, can we put the options up on, on the screen? Is that a possibility? Um, because you're reading options, but we really need to be able to refer to all the options.
And, um, I, I don't have anything to put up on the screen. I do, I, I did with the memo, uh, attach our current ordinance, um, Lee County's ordinance as, by way of example, um, to that as exhibits. Um, I don't know if you have that packet in front of you.
I do. And, um, it's a big one.
Yes.
Uh, and I know, uh, some of us, when we, when we've been at our FAC conferences and we've been talking about this, there are a number of counties who have enacted this, this kind of safety ordinance. And I think, I think we should do the same. Um, I'm, I, on a drive around Holiday, which I do regularly, uh, they're at every intersection and, um, it's dangerous. They're, they're walking down between the cars and, uh, it's very, you know, who wants to hit, hit someone driving, walking down the street? And it's just unsafe for our citizens.
And what I can do is, is, say to you is, is what's the example that I provide as exhibit Lee County's ordinance says, is it says that it is first, um, unlawful to remain in a refuse, which is essentially the median area, whether it's paved or not paved.
Okay.
If it's less than six feet. And unless you're actively, unless you're actively crossing in a crosswalk and abiding by, um, the existing state laws related to what we would call jaywalking statute. I've actually made reference to it in the memorandum. It's Florida Statute, uh, 316.130. Now, it also creates a second section that says it's unlawful in, in Lee County to, uh, have a physical exchange or physical interaction amongst the pedestrian and, uh, a vehicle. And, uh, and, uh, and specifically notes a vehicle that's not lawfully parked. So in other words, in the roadway at an intersection, stopped at a, a red light, stopped at a stop sign, and there's a physical interaction, it makes it a violation. So it almost simplifies, uh, what exactly a violation is. Uh, it removes any, um, uh, uh, contemplation of, of, on the enforcement side, whether it's sheriff's office or code enforcement, uh, of trying to determine what the intent and the message is that the person's, uh, uh, trying to, to relay.
Right.
And it just says simply, this is a violation. There's no physical interaction, uh, between a, a pedestrian and a vehicle.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you another question. Okay. Well, let's think about local roads a little bit too. So we think, you know, our major quarter is 1954 and such, but we have quite a few local roads and neighborhood roads that aren't within a CDD or HOA. Um, talk a little, I guess, more about what their protections are as well. I mean, because it's, it's not a major intersection. There's a lot, lots of times there are not stop signs. There's no traffic signals in those areas. I mean, I don't, what I want to make sure we're not doing is driving some of these people into like literally residential neighborhoods.
Right. Well, well, this would protect, uh, any public road from, for purposes of whether it's a major intersection or a, a smaller two-lane road, uh, if someone's stopping in the middle of the road, for example, and interacting with someone that's on the side of the road there. It's the same, the same effect. It doesn't limit it, um, necessarily to major intersection like 54 and, and a little.
Well, no, we, we were just talking about stop signs and, and signal stuff. What if I, what if a, a person is walking down a sidewalk in a, a residential neighborhood and has a, you know, um, a sign that says, you know, I, I need money, whatever it may say, um, and walking up in front of a, a neighborhood, in front of people's houses and things like that.
Well, that, I mean, that, well, that wouldn't apply. I mean, if they're on the sidewalk, that wouldn't apply in this situation. So holding up a sign, uh, standing on the sidewalk, sidewalk is, is essentially what's this case that I'm addressing, this federal case in Vigan v. Shore, uh, states that, you know, that's a, a protected, uh, right. Uh, you know, holding up signs, uh, petitioning, uh, protesting or what.
Well, we know that, but I'm talking about Lily Panhandling, asking people for money.
They include the soliciting aspect of it. Right. And, and, and that's, they essentially, this court, uh, uh, clarifies that, uh, and basically states that panhandling begging it would be included in those, in, uh, that.
We have a tax clerk's office here. Can we make them have a, um, what, what do we call it? A, um, a, um?
Business tax receipt.
A business tax receipt.
[laughing]
It's one way to get around it.
Mr. Mariana?
Thank you. This has been a, a very sore subject in Hudson area. Probably, probably the number one complaint I get is all the panhandling. Commissioner Starkey, I'm sure you get just as many up and down. Uh, they'll go on Beacon Woods Drive, which is right next to US 19. They'll stay right there and on and on they go. Uh, they go down at 52. Matter of fact, Alex, while you're here as well, um, there's a gentleman that's out there. He actually brings two children out there with him at 19 and 52. If that's going on, that needs to stop. Someone needs to go call DCA and, and have that changed right away. I just heard about that last night as we were talking about this. Um, so I'm very, Patrick, I want to thank you, Jeff, Christie as well, for bringing this forward. Uh, it was very quick to bring it back to what Lee County had done. And very simply, it does the two things you need to do. It, it addresses, uh, stopping, standing or otherwise occupying a median that is not sufficient pedestrian refuge. Perfect, all the way through that. The second part is what we talked about, as far as try to get the people to understand they are going to be in violation of the law if they give. Uh, and that's in the second phase of engaging in any physical interaction between a pedestrian and occupant of motor vehicle. Those two things will help us tremendously. And I, and I will tell everyone here, Dan especially, uh, to Sally, code enforcement, I can't think of a more important thing for code enforcement officers to do, at least in the Hudson area, to go attack this issue. Let the people know as they're giving and do it right in front of the people that are holding up these signs, that you're not allowed to go do it. It may deter this behavior from going on. And I want to say with so many jobs that are available, we have people that can't hire people because they don't want to work. And I'm going to tell you, some of these guys are dressed pretty well and, and have the opportunity to go to work if they want to do. Uh, matter of fact, the people that were down at the 52 and 19 with the kids, I had a person who owned a restaurant, drove back to them. He goes, do you need food? He goes, no, I really don't need food. I just need money. All right? That, that's the type of thing that's going on. So I think, I want to thank you guys tremendously. I encourage us to, to be put forward, brought before the board. I think it's, it hits it perfectly, but simply, and, and I think it can change quality of life for our citizens.
Um, so I, I do want to bring something forward, but there's a couple of challenges still, and that is enforcement. And, um, I don't know if Alex left, but.
He's right there.
Oh, okay. So, you know, right now, so what is, what does enforcement look like? If you hand a homeless person a, a piece of paper that they have to pay money or something, they're just going, they just crumble it up and put it on the ground. So I feel we're going to have to get, um, a little tough for a little bit and get that message out there that this is not allowed in our county and we're going to have to enforce it. Um, and I understand that could be a revolving door, but it's not a nice revolving door and we're, and I just feel we have to enforce it. If we, if we have something and it's not enforced, then what good is it?
Yeah. That's a good, can I just?
Yeah, jump on that.
Chairman, and that's a good point about obviously getting the word out. And Commissioner Mariana and Starkey both mentioned that, you know, I think with, working with our PIOs, let's, let's get the message out. We have opportunities, you know, on the billboards. We have space on the billboards that, in the electronic billboards we can have. Let's tell people that this is essentially illegal. You cannot do this. You will be cited as a driver if you're giving money out to these people in the corners, right? So working with our teams to get the message out, that's what we're going to have to do. Because how, if not, unless you're sitting in here and watching this, watching this from home, you're not going to know about it. So we gotta, we gotta spread the word and get it out there and do a public service program to get the message out.
So I, um, was, um, solicited, uh, in front of my Publix and, on South Gate the other day by a, a gentleman who, um, he didn't get so far to ask me anything, but I, I went to my car and I thought. But I went to my car and I thought, I told my husband, "I have to go back and talk to him." And he didn't look homeless or anything, but I went back and I said, "Were you going to ask me something?" And he said, "No, I just wanted you to have a blessed day," or something. And I'm like, "Yeah." I said, "Are you in need of a job?" And he said, "Yes, I would love to have a job." And I gave him my phone number, and I didn't ask my staff. I said, "Please call my office Monday morning. We have resources and we can help you get a job." And so, you know, my office, I just handed this to you. And during Commissioners' Items, I'm going to show you a video of some things in Holiday. But we, we made this brochure that we could hand out to people. And I, and I think the administrator's office decided that it should be for the whole county. I personally think people on the West Side aren't going to care what's going on on the East Side, so I think y'all should make your own. And at first, it said West Pasco Homeless Resources, and I said, "You know what? That's, I didn't want to say that." So, we said, "Let's say West Pasco Life Resources." And I think I'm going to tweak it again to make sure that there is a big thing on here that says that we can help you get a job. Because I want to help anyone who wants to work, I want to help them work. That's, that helps end this problem. Then, of course, there's the mental health issues. But, so, we're going to be handing this out to people I see on the street. And I'm giving this to all the HOAs and civic leaders that come to my Harbor South Leadership Council meeting to go back to their communities and print them out and give them to their people. And when you see someone, we're not done with this yet, that might need some help, give it to them, and let's hope that they take some action for themselves, so. But I am very much in favor of this ordinance.
But also, these issues are also for the entire county, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't think there's anything wrong with having two, because.
The main thing is to get the word out.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, this is an action, so.
Oh, move to, move to enact a new, an ordinance similar to Lee County's.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Mr. Chairman, just.
Or, excuse me.
That didn't work?
And, well, and direct board records to advertise the amendment for public hearing when it's ready.
And do that. Advertise.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Good job, Patrick.
Okay, we got a time certain, and our tax collector is here with us, so he will come forward. Out of 55.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, thank you so very much, and members, I won't be but a couple of minutes. As you know, I'd like to come by here and just give you a quick rundown. We have a check for you today. Our staff is always, does an excellent job. We have very, very little wait times. We have people that come from all over the state that visit our five offices to get services. And as I tell my staff, don't say it out loud, but if you see a customer come in, in your mind, I want you to say cha-ching, because that, that brings money to Pasco County. But with that said, our hope was to give you about $1.9 million this year. As you know, we also renovated our Dade City office, just a beautiful office, spent just about a million dollars there. And the county, the county staff was just excellent working with us and getting it done. We reopened that up, we expanded it, and with the growth that's going out, out there, I know Commissioner Moore and Commissioner Oakley, you can appreciate that with our growth. We wanted to make certain it was big enough to handle that growth, and it's going to take care of it. Couple of other things, the tourist development tax, I'm happy to report, even with COVID, we collected $3.5 million for you, which was the largest amount. Your maximum was usually about $3 million, we did $3.5 for you, turned that over to you as well. And I have a check for you, even though we had hoped to give you $1.9, we're going to give you $2.881 today, $2,881,000. Sorry?
That's a little bait and switch.
It couldn't be more than that, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
I have it spent, so don't even think about it.
Well, it's, it's very much needed in the county, those funds.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate all you're doing, your offices.
We appreciate you, and you're, not only the five of you, your county attorney, your county administrator, Dan Bial, just fabulous, and working with him, his staff, and as we do things, whenever we need something or help with something, they're there almost immediately, so. And that's why we always say Pasco Proud. We all work very closely together, and that's why you're very successful and our county is successful. So, who would like the check? I'll give this to your clerk. Yeah.
I take it.
I'll take it.
Be careful with them. You better give it to the clerk, the rest of us got sticky hands, I think.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to.
Need to get more business tax receipts, too.
B-57, or, excuse me, R-57? I think I'm right, yeah. Marcy, I know that.
Good morning. Commissioners, Marcy Esberg, Director of Community Development, Pasco County. I feel like we've got a few minutes of feel-good, so this is a feel-good presentation following the money. So, you get money, you spend money, that's the law of life, right? So, I'm here today to talk about a new housing project that's coming up, and it is with the Pasco County Housing Authority called Magnolia Oaks in Newport Ritchie. So, as we go into the next slide, you'll see that this project will consist of 77 units, new construction rental units, and therefore, very low and low-income persons, primarily homeless veterans and families, and non-elderly disabled veteran, non-elderly disabled and families. So, when we break down the project, you see that we're going to have 40 units that are dedicated to our homeless veterans, 37 units for the non-elderly disabled who are either transitioning out of institutional or segregated settings, at serious risk of institutionalization. They might be currently experiencing homelessness, they might have previously experienced homelessness, or they're at risk of experiencing homelessness. So, this is very much a project that's going to serve some of the vulnerable people in our community. What does the project look like? It's a townhome design with 34 one-bedroom units, 33 two-bedroom units, and 10 three-bedroom units. And a lot of times, people ask, "Well, why is the makeup like this?" And you'll see, and I've said this several times, is that really the need, very much a need in our community is for single adults, one bedrooms. And so, it's good that we're having, you know, a good portion of those like that. There'll also be a community building and a swimming pool. And because we're working with very vulnerable people, we've all known and we learned that you can't just put somebody in housing and expect them to succeed, but you have to surround them with wraparound or supportive services, and this project will incorporate that. So, where is the project located? It is on the next slide, oh, the schematic plan looks like this. And then, if you go down to the next slide, it is located on, just under a 10-acre site in Newport Ritchie on Massachusetts Avenue. So, it is right around the corner. And then, we're going to talk a little bit about the funding. So, that's really why we're here today. Two years ago, you approved $1 million in our regular 2019 action plan. So, at that time, that was the request, and that's what they thought the project needed. So, we, we dedicated $1 million of our home funding to this project. And as they've gotten numbers and as they've talked to HUD, they realized that there was a gap between the money we were giving them and the gap to what HUD is willing to finance. And so, they came back to ask for more money to close that gap. And that really is the purpose of our home funds, is to be that kind of gap financing. So, we do have the funds available under our Home Investment Partnership Program. And so, we are proposing that we give them additional funds to support the construction of these 77 units. So, if you look at the project costs, it's going to run a little higher than $16 million. We are proposing we give them $2.1 million for the construction of the units, and then, they'll be funding or financing the rest through HUD funding, and they've already gotten approval for that. On the timeline, you could see on the next slide that all the sources, funding sources have been committed, and are will be finally committed in December. Gosh, it feels like it's December already, but it's only October. And, and they, and then with your approval today, that, that funding source of HUD will be approved, hoping to start construction February 2022, with the completion in June of 2023. So, we're coming to you today. The final slide is the recommendation to approve the appropriation of the $2.1 million to the Pasco County Housing Authority for the construction of 77 units of affordable housing. And we have with us today also David Lambert, who's the chairman of the Pasco County Housing Authority, and Terry Stobbs, the executive director. If you have specific questions about the project, or if you would like to hear from David Lambert, he is also available. Thank you.
Ms. Stark?
Thank you, Marcy. And we've been waiting for this for a while. I know they had, I don't remember what the issues were, they just told me, but I forgot. But, but I'm so excited about this coming forward, and it's actually going to be across the street from the park, the Magnolia Park. Are these one-story, are they all one-story, or is there any two-story? That's my one question. Then, how quickly can we start doing another one? That's my second question, because this is what we need. This is, we need this badly all over the county.
We needed more of these. This is a, this is a great thing to happen, but more is better.
Yeah.
And we, and we have, you know, I hate to say we have the money, but we have the money to do these things.
Yeah, let's go.
You know, we, I appreciate, really, you know, and David will come up and answer your project-specific questions, but the Pasco County Housing Authority is a great partner. You know, it's, you know, you have money to spend. My office does not go out and build, so we need partners like them to do that, and also our nonprofit partners, so.
Mr. Lambert?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. David Lambert with La Cucia Electric, chairman of the Pasco County Housing Authority. First, I want to say thank you to our county administrator, our assistant county administrator, Ann Marcy, and the entire Community Development Department. They have been just wonderful to work with on not only this project, but a lot of projects that we've worked together on. And this is the first of many that we have done. And the Pasco County Housing Authority is the community's housing authority. And I want to say, 11 years ago, when Mr. Brown asked me to work with the Pasco County Housing Authority, we were almost in receivership with, from HUD. And now, we are a top-performing housing authority in the country. So, that's something that all of you all should be proud of. And in doing so, HUD put the resources behind this community project, this community housing development. They will be one-story units. It will have wraparound services from the VA. We will have a VA caseworker on-site on the, in the community center. Congressman Bill Arrakis, which Premier doesn't know this yet, has reached out to me and asked if we would consider putting a federally qualified health center, Premier, and expansion in there. We are looking at that. This is a big boon for our community, and will really go a long way to help with combating homelessness as well, especially, this is a veterans' family housing community, which is one that we desperately need within this county, and it will help with some of the homelessness along the 19 corridor, so.
Can you explain the VASH vouchers that are going into this?
HUD has allowed us to place VASH vouchers through, behind this, so it will be a subsidized voucher to help get those families back on their feet. With that, you know, every voucher is, every person who lives at the Pasco County Housing Authority in our community is, or has a Section 8 voucher, is required to put 30% of their income with it. So, everybody has skin in the game, but it goes a long way with it. So, the VASH vouchers are what's backing this, and Section 811 vouchers that are backing this project, so it will cash flow, this community, so it will cash flow and be a viable project within our community. The feds will have a lot of money in this project, long-term, for over 30 years, so. It's a significant boon to our community. We do have another one that we are working on, not with the housing authority, but with the one with the nonprofit we created called Vincent Academy Adventure Coast. That will be 30 units, or 38 units of mental health housing behind Vincent House Pasco, which will go a long way. And we have others that we are, have in the pipeline. So, we recognize the need. The housing authority is 99% occupied at all times now. So, we recognize the need, and we are trying to do some other things to build affordable housing within our community on single-family lots. And we've, like I said, we have worked wonderfully with Kathy and, and Marcy and the entire community development staff, so. It's going to be a big, big deal for our community.
Ms. Fitzpatrick?
Thank you, Chairman. I would just like to say thank you for taking the time to work heavily with the neighbors to, with any of their concerns, so you have gone above and beyond to help with any drainage and flooding issues over there. I would like to know if there would be possibly a substation there for the sheriffs or an extra room, maybe to help to keep with safety?
The sheriff hasn't requested that. I'm sure we could probably accommodate that. We welcome the sheriff at any of our communities. You know, public safety is a big issue. Having a sheriff's president's presence at our communities is fantastic. One of the things that we do do is every single resident who comes in and leases from the Pasco County Housing Authority goes through a nationwide background check. And we, if you do, living in, in our communities is a privilege. And we want you to be there, and we want to make your family successful. That's why we have a very successful family self-sufficiency program. However, if you don't want to live in our communities and abide by the rules, we certainly don't want you there to cause problems. But yes, the sheriff, if he would love to have a substation there, I'm sure our board would be more than willing, within the footprint, because we're not allowed to change the community building, to do that, so.
So, kind of what, let me just explain that a little, if I understand it, if you commit a crime and you live in a, in one of these places, you're out?
If it's a, if it's a felony, especially with any type of abuse, violence towards women, drugs, anything like that, you're, you're out. And you can't come back for five years.
Well, I'm asking because you had mentioned 37 non-elder disabled or transitional housing. So, you will help give second chances?
So, with, with VASH, VASH is, it has a different set of rules. Some veterans have issues with the law or things like that. As long as it's not a violent crime or drug offenses, we are allowed to bring you in and to help you. And that is the goal. You know, we realize that everybody has issues in life, and a lot of our folks that come in have mental health issues. So, that's the whole continuum of care that we're trying to put in place, not only within the county, but at the housing authority to, to really get these folks moving in the right direction. And our family self-sufficiency program, it has a 90% success rate, roughly, where people don't come back into public housing, and that is the goal. And what that does with the family self-sufficiency program, we take a portion of their rent after they go through all the financial classes and everything else and are working, and it allows them to do two things. One, put a down payment on a new home for their family. We escrow that money, a portion of their rent, or pay for them an advanced education, whether that be a technical school or college or something like that, to really kind of build the family unit. That will be in place, too. Intensive case management there with the VA, and our staff works in conjunction to try to get these folks, because it builds better families.
And one last question. I appreciate both of you working very diligently for our, to help with affordable housing in our veterans. I have heard on multiple occasions with Oznum 2 and 3 and the Rosalie Rendu, I was asking questions about what is the capacity, or do you have additional units available? And I had heard that it took a two-to-three-month delay to offer the housing. Can you elaborate on that?
So.
Those aren't your project.
But that's not our community's, Commissioner, so.
Okay, St. Vincent de Paul cares.
By Catholic charities.
Yeah, we are 99% occupied at all times, and our, our team turns a unit, it's usually within seven days. The housing authority operates off of a extremely thin margin. If a unit is not filled, we get no management fee on it. So, if it's not filled, it costs us the agency money and we cannot operate. But it also, we want to get that person in and get the wraparound services and make them productive, so we don't have the issues that we're having within our community. But those are not our units that, that we have any type of control of.
Okay, because I also heard there's state qualifications, and I know I brought this up with Sally as well. this up with Sally as well. I had heard that it took additional two to three months because the state requires additional qualifications. So instead of them, people being able to go into these housings right away from two, three months, they had to wait two, three months because they had to raise the countertops two inches, or we had to widen the doorways. So I just want to try to make sure, how can we streamline to make sure this doesn't happen again? And if it's a state project, make sure that it's, we're still meeting the guidelines. How can we work together on that?
So, so we are, the state guidelines are totally different than the federal guidelines. We don't have to, HUD inspects every one of our units a couple of times a year. As a matter of fact, HUD auditors and USDA auditors come into the housing authority. We don't follow those guidelines. They do what are called REAC inspections, and that's basically readiness for our housing to make sure it is not substandard within our communities. So we have a certain number of disabled housing units that are already in the pipeline, but, and, so it, it isn't an issue with us. I'm not aware of these state issues, but on the federal side, it, it, it doesn't impact the Pasco County Housing Authority.
Thank you. I will follow up with you, Commissioner.
Ms. Mariana?
I'll get some information, I'll follow up with you.
Ms. Mariana?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is a phenomenal project. And I want to say Pasco County is like the luckiest county ever with Lakucha Electric to work with as a partner. What you guys do for economic development, the affordable housing, the Vincent House, et cetera, it's tremendous, and we're blessed to have you. We appreciate you every step of the way. Marcy, for you to bring this project forward as well, to help work with them. Kathy, this is phenomenal stuff. One of the things I've talked with before is about some of your members, if you guys ever need help on some of your existing places with landscaping, you know, we've got a landscaping fund if you want to address some of those up. Happy to work with you. I just want to say that publicly, I've talked to the board members, but just so you know, if we can help you in any way to improve what you're doing, I think you're doing a phenomenal job. Very excited to see the project. We're happy to keep on working with you.
Commissioner.
Second?
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
We love what you do, so.
R 58?
And he runs Career Source, too. He's the chair.
That's busy.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Scott Casson, Fire Chief, Pasco Fire Rescue. I am here this morning for an introduction to a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 38, Emergency Services of the Pasco County Code, to modify when an application for Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity, COPCN, can be filed, and adding an administrative procedure for renewal of COPCNs, no funding. All right, so, I guess I have to flip the button here. I'm going to refer to the common acronym COPCN several times throughout my short presentation, so just as a reminder, it is Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity. But today, we're here to bring forward a request to modify our current EMS ordinance. Specifically, Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 38, which I said a minute ago, is emergency services, which promulgates the provisions for the county's ability to obtain emergency medical transportation services for its citizens through the use and issuance of COPCNs. So under that particular section, it does designate that COPCNs are applied for annually currently. This process, of course, is very, very time-consuming. It takes about five months from start to finish, and it is a lot of work for specifically our fire rescue EMS division, as well as assembling the entire EMS advisory board, as well as it's very time-consuming for the applicant themselves. Once they do, once they do receive a COPCN license, it is good for a period of two years. So what ends up happening is that by issuing these COPCN certificates every year, we end up with a whole, all of them out of sequence with each other. So what we are proposing today to solve this is allowing a amendment to the application period to be every other year, for every two years. And that'll subsequently be on the odd number of years, and this will allow all the COPCN certificates to be issued at the same time and be on the same cycle, which is also going to match up with the state licensing for COPCNs. Additionally, as a part of this, we are also asking to allow the provision that will essentially grant the county administrator the approval to approve renewals. Instead of the renewals, the applicants having to go through that entire process just for a renewal, this will allow us administratively to go through the renewal packet, and as long as they meet all the criteria that's set forth in their current ordinance, the county administrator will have the authority to approve that without having to assemble the EMS advisory board or bring the item forward to you. So by doing all this, of course, that's going to streamline the entire process and make it a lot simpler for a lot of people. Now, you should have received this morning an updated agenda memo. There was a modification that was made at the last minutes. Hopefully, you have that today. But that's, that's allowing now the county attorney's office to advertise for the public hearing rather than board records, just because of the very, very tight timeframe from which we have to work. So what we are asking for specifically today is to approve the amendments to Chapter 38 of the Pasco County Code of Ordinances and allow advertisement of the ordinance amendments for a public hearing on November 9th, 2021, at 1:30 PM at historic Pasco County Courthouse in Dade City.
And then me, too, please.
This, yeah, this is just, it's a no-brainer. Thanks for following direction, the board. I think, Commissioner, I'll wait for the, I'll make the motion, but I'll allow her to obviously do her thing.
Yeah, because, thank you. And I, I think this is really good that we're doing this way, but there's still, I think, some board direction missing. And that was that showing need. So the ordinance falls short in failing to correct that consistency between Section 38-43 C, that contains the required elements each application must include, and Section 38-45 that details the review criteria the EMS advisory board and the BLCC must use to consider whether to issue the COPN. It doesn't mention that the applicant need, has to show need, so then you can get unsolicited applications all the time. And I think we gave board direction that we wanted, that they should have to show a need. So there's maybe two ways we can go. Implement the two-year cycles proposed, and add that an applicant will include in their application signed statements or testimonies from leaders in the healthcare industry and medical facilities that the applicant proposes to serve a testing to the need and necessity of another ambulance service, and how the public interest will be served by the granting of a COPN. Or discontinue, and there's, I have some other notes here, but discontinue the process of accepting unsolicited applications for new COPCNs, and charge the county administrator's office with determining when a potential need may be present in the county, and when one exists, publicly invite ambulance providers to submit applications for COPN. So, you know, I think we need to still have that in there.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think Commissioner Stark is right on point. This could save you, just you talk about all the time it takes to go through this, when there's really not a need anyway. We can streamline this whole process and still serve the citizens best. So I appreciate them suggesting.
That's what we, you and I talked about.
Exactly, yeah.
I can give this to you guys.
So there's a second part to this. It's not part of today's modification request and introduction, but subsequent to the, hopefully the approval of this amendment, modification, that we will assemble a, a small team of people that are, that are going to look specifically at the ordinance, because the, the existing ordinance is very antiquated, and there's a lot of outdated material in that. I think it was originally crafted in 1984. So we've, behind the scenes, the county attorney's office has already done a lot of legwork looking at other counties and other systems that are in place that are, you know, far better than what we do here. So we needed to do this today to buy us some time, because now this will give us a whole year now to work on that and bring back something that will, that will accommodate.
It will take a whole year?
Well, we have that time. We, because the next application period won't be until a year from January. So not until January 23, if this is approved. So we will use that time between now and then to come up with a, hopefully a better solution that will address all of your requests.
Excellent. We, I guess you kind of have board direction, that we want something like that in your, whatever you come up with.
Yes.
So I have a motion.
And a second?
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. And thank you to the county attorney's office, and to our agenda coordinator for making all this happen in such a short period of time.
Chief, I can tell you, in my district, I've already heard about the inspections going on, and that people never have had because you didn't have the system out there for Fire Marshal to be doing some of those inspections, and that team's out there working, because I'm hearing from a lot of my people that have businesses that probably never been checked, that should have been done a long time ago, so.
Good. Hopefully, it was positive feedback. I know I've gotten the same thing, and, you know, I haven't had an inspection in 10 years or eight years, and now they're seeing them. So hopefully, over the course of the next several years, we'll be able to get into all those commercial occupancies on a very regular basis and make us safer.
I think it's good, and I, I see good feedback coming back from it, things that people overlook of how they stack their supplies and things in an office and.
Usually, very simple things, yeah. They make a big difference.
Yeah, it's simple things, but it's, it's doing very good, so, yeah.
Very good. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Ms. Chairman, Chief, I just want to say, and I appreciate you working very closely with Sally Sherman, the inspections team. You guys are doing a great job working together to get stuff done, to take care of the citizens, too, that are trying to build and expand their businesses, so, thank you.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We move on to R 59. Mr. Pitos?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Niktario Spitos with the Planning and Development Department. I'm happy to be here today before the Board of County Commissioners to give you all an update on the work we've been doing with the comprehensive plan itself. So before I get into this update for the folks at home, just to give them a heads-up on what the comprehensive plan is, it's the Long Range Plan to Manage Growth, Improve Quality of Life, and Ensure Long-Term Sustainability for the County, both economically, fiscally, et cetera, et cetera. And it's a state-mandated plan. Florida state statutes requires in Chapter 163 that we have a comprehensive plan that considers all of the elements that you see on the overhead: future land use, transportation, housing, conservation, coastal management, recreation, and open space, public facilities, capital improvements, intergovernmental coordination, and economic development. And these are what's required. There can be others. And so you get the idea that the comprehensive plan, being comprehensive, encompasses quite a bit of information that will help guide the future growth of the county. So we've been working on the comprehensive plan update this past year for a number of reasons. The current comprehensive plan became effective in 1991, and it was last updated in 2006 with an established horizon year of 2025. And in December of 2019, we entered into an agreement with HDR Engineering, who are consultants, to help us do this project. On December 8th of 2020, the Board of County Commissioners approved the first task order to proceed with the comprehensive plan update that established it for, as a five-year project. And so today, actually, task order for year two was on the agenda, on the consent agenda, and that was, that was approved. So why are we doing an update of the comprehensive plan? We want to understand the current conditions and address the changing needs and reassess the vision that the current comprehensive plan has. It's been 16 years since the last update, 31 years since the establishment of the plan, and a lot has changed since 1991 and 2006, and a lot is changing right now. And because the 1991 plan took us to 2025, we're looking at the next plan to take us to 2050, hence the new name of the Future Comprehensive Plan being the Pasco 2050 Plan. And you can see the logo of that up in the, in the corner of the slide, and we'll have more on that in just a second. So the purpose of the Pasco 2050 Plan is to guide future growth in Pasco County, which is a similar purpose to the current 1991 plan. To do that, we've done a number of projects this year, particularly one known as the Outreach and Engagement Plan, which was provided in your packet, and that one was to support the creation of the new strategic and thoughtful plan that we're, that we're going to be proposing in a few years. That'll be inclusive of our county's collective vision. Public involvement is critical at every stage of the planning process, which is why we put together the Outreach and Engagement Plan. And so we want to be able to solicit the feedback, involvement, and the public input that'll serve as the foundation for the content that's going to be created for the Pasco 2050 Plan. The Outreach and Engagement Plan is a first of its kind for this sort of effort here in Pasco County, and this will be something we carry on, carry out throughout the entire comprehensive plan updating process over the coming years. And so we're going to work to ensure tomorrow's Pasco represents the community's or the public's vision, and we're committed to working with our community members to plan for our future as we work to become Florida's premier county. So we're bringing a lot of what the strategic plan is calling for to make Pasco Florida's premier county. We want to bring that into the update of the comprehensive plan as well. And so we're going to be revisioning the county's long-term plan, and we're going to be looking at a number of data, asking lots of questions, and studying the county, where we've been and where we're going. That is going to require a particular multi-year process that I've outlined on the overhead above, and it starts with year one, which we just completed, and we're going to present some of those updates to you today. Year one was all about diagnostics, planning for the plan itself, understanding the opportunities that are ahead of us here. And we'll present in just a few minutes the Outreach and Engagement Plan itself. We completed a diagnostic report for the comprehensive plan. We've done market analysis, as well as established a best practices report, and we'll go into all of those in just a minute. In years two and three, which begins today after the board approved the task order for year two, we're going to be doing visioning and framing for the comprehensive plan. So this is where we're going to develop the visions and values for the different areas of focus, and actually plan the framework of the, of the Pasco 2050 Plan. So year two, the task order that was approved this morning includes deliverables that we can present in the future regarding issues, and a Issues and Ideas Report, a Planning and Growth Challenges Report, as well as your Preliminary Plan Framework Map and Report. So these will be foundational documents taking us into year three. And years three and four will be actually doing the plan drafting itself. So we're still not at that phase where we're going to be creating new goals, objectives, and policies in the comprehensive plan. We're still learning and updating and getting the information so that we can make those updates. Years three and four will have the future land use map updated. We will draft plan elements and themes. Couple of ideas we've been bouncing around include either keeping to the way the current comprehensive plan is organized in terms of elements, like those I showed previous, on the previous slide, or grouping those elements together thematically so that there's a comprehensive picture on each portion of the, each topic of the comprehensive plan. And then in year five, which we anticipate to be about 2025, 2026, will be the plan finalization, where we will be looking at the plan, seeing what we've come up with. Is it feasible? Asking those types of questions, refining the plan, and then bringing it forward in 2025, 2026 for final review and adoption. And so I'll stop here and hand the mic over to Valerie Brookins, who's a planner, too, at the Planning and Development Department. She's been working on this project and helping us move it forward, and she'll give you an overview of the year one activities. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Chair, before you leave, I remember when we first brought this up, was it 14 or 15? We met on this?
I wasn't here.
Yeah, you weren't here. I don't know if you commissioners remember. I thought initially we were going to get that thing rolling within about two, so we could be done by '23 or so. Now we're going to roll into 20 what?
2025, 2026.
Because there's a lot of things we asked for, a lot of changes we requested. This is before your time. A lot of things we requested. So now we're going to wait until 2025 for a lot of these things. Not putting the heat on you, because I don't even know if you were here.
I wasn't.
There you go. So it's unfortunate that a lot of things, that I know at that time, there was three of us here, asked for to get done, and now we're going to wait until 2025. Listen, I know it's a, a big project. I mean, if you see the Land Development Code, it's pretty thick books, but it's a long time to wait.
It is, but I think it's important to be able to go through the public outreach and development process with the community.
Oh, I don't disagree, but we're going on.
Just takes a long time.
We're going on, you know, for, for years or so. We're going on, you know, four years or so from when it was first brought up and first asked to initiate changes. So in reality, you know, you're looking at about nine years timeframe from when it was, when we first brought this up.
So to your point, and it takes a long time, like you say. I started working on just getting a road paved when I first got elected in 16. It's paved now. It's been six, well, five years.
Let me talk to you about a bathroom in Starkey Wilderness Park. But I, we brought this up before, and if you, if you remember, I, I think I said it here at the meeting, I wondered if there were ways to speed up the process by hiring more people. Do we have an outside firm helping us? What, is there a way to put more resources towards this so that it can be sped up? Because I can tell you, as you're seeing, I'm putting some stuff in at develop, at when we have approvals here for, I think it's, David Goldstein has to help me here, but there's certain kind of approvals that we give where I'm putting in, you've got to have a tree in front of your house. And now I'm going to talk to you all about having architectural elements on your buildings and having to do it from here, because it's not in the LDC.
Yes, but that's Land Development Code, that's not what Terry's presenting to you today, which is comprehensive plan.
Well.
Yeah, but it is our.
You've got, you've got a workload on both halves. You've got, but this is the comprehensive plan, which is a much broader tool.
Yeah, I know, this is huge. And we definitely need, I mean, most people don't amend their comprehensive plan every board meeting like we do, that I'm aware of. It's a couple of times a year or once a year. It's a very special event. I was on the year, I was part of the year when we redid that part of the comprehensive plan. Environmental, what was that? What's the year?
Evaluation and appraisal report.
Yeah, evaluation and appraisal.
Yeah, I don't, that took forever. We had so many community meetings, and that was just one little piece, I think. Do you have any, is there any way we can speed it up?
When we said, when we did this, was Land Development Code and Comp Plan. That's, we were talking about both of those at that initial meeting.
I thought we were too. Because they both need to be fixed.
Yeah, all that workshop, we were gathered around the table. Remember that? I think it was up in, it was in Dade City or something, I think, when we had that discussion. Not Dade City, yeah.
St. Leo.
St. Leo, thank you, yeah.
But every one of the steps that he's saying here is very important.
Of course.
And we want you to go through all of them. We're just, is there any way to speed it up? I know you all are very busy.
Right. He's looking at me for money.
Today, we approved, we approved the task order this morning on consent to add another year.
We have funded, you funded it last year for phase one.
Right.
This year, year two, and then, you know, it'll be in the budget for the next two or three years until we get this done. But it's not a short-term process.
Right. So Commissioner Stark's point, sorry, I'm jumping in again, is if I'm not correct, that task order was for 250?
228.
228 this morning? Okay. So how many, how many consultants do we get for 228?
So we.
Because I'm sure they're only working on our project.
Yeah, so we have HDR Engineering on tap for this project. They have at least three or four other sub consultants under them, helping them with the project. HDR is a very large reputable firm that has done a lot of Florida comprehensive plans.
Sure.
By way of comparison, the long-range transportation plan that's conducted every five years by the MPO is typically about a million to a million two hundred thousand dollars. And we've estimated that updating the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan itself is going to be something on that magnitude, on that order of magnitude, a million to a million two hundred thousand. Now, we've also gotten a $750,000 grant from the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity to do resiliency planning. And so there's a lot of money coming in from the state to help us upgrade our resiliency plan, which is going to feed right into the comprehensive plan. We also got another $80,000 from the state as well to do peril flooding, mapping and planning that will also be built into the comprehensive plan. We're doing the housing market study on the other, the multifamily issue, but we're going to be leveraging those resources that we're spending in that direction to inform the comprehensive plan as it relates to the housing situation here in the county. So we're looking at multiple areas, wherever we're doing work, and seeing where we can leverage that information and bring it into the comprehensive plan.
But some of those things, by the time we get done in five years, and we do portions of this in map, in year four and five, it's going to change again. The housing market's going to be different in four or five years from now. I don't think anybody disagrees with me, but I'm right.
I, no, I agree 1,000 percent.
I think we all agree it takes a long time.
But should it take that much time? Is there a way to speed it up? I mean, with the research we've done between ULI, looking at all the market areas, all the market things we had, I mean, I remember meeting down at Homewood Suites, talking about the West Market area. Here's what we want, here's what we want to see get done. Take that information and go speed this process up. As far as like doing all these meetings, we've had these meetings. Go take the information from those meetings and start structuring stuff. One of the things I've brought up many, many times is the way we're dealing with the growth on our coast. I mean, I've got a guy who wants to put a seawall up three feet, and I've got an engineer saying, no, you can only go a foot and a half. And logically, no simple reason for that. FEMA would want you to go higher. So let's go look at what we've got out there. We right now have a coastal high, high hazard area done in our comprehensive plan that hasn't been updated to match the definition that the state's got. We're, we're putting more restrictions on ourselves instead of working what's already with the state. We shouldn't be more restrictive than what the state is. And it should be simple. As a matter of fact, I'll share that with you later on when we get done to go push it forward. So I think we should really take, what information do you have that you can look at that we've already done these outreach meetings up and down the coast, across the whole county? Let's go use that data to bring something forward, rather than going through this longer step. And then when we get to the end of it, we can go through the public hearing process to get more information from it. But we're going to study in five more years? Now that information is going to be antiquated? We can't use that now? We've got to get new stuff again? We've got enough stuff on the shelf, I think, to work at right now with what we've got.
You're hearing about this, Ms. Chairman, sorry.
We've got to continue this meeting so we can finish by noon.
Well, I know I do too, but we also did say, and I mentioned at that time, is that no consultants, let's have enough FTE so they're here full-time to do the job. But we didn't do that either. That were dedicated to these projects, that was development code and comprehensive plan.
Where are we on this five-year journey?
Well, we're beginning year two today. So we're in the visioning and framing portion of the sequence that's on the overhead.
So is it possible to do visioning in six months instead of a year?
So the, the year two is going to include visioning, and we anticipate the issues and ideas report to come out sooner than next September, the end of the fiscal year. Valerie could probably speak to some of the task scheduling associated with the task order two that was approved today. But we anticipate that these products are going to be coming out throughout the year, and we'll be able to provide updates as they're being established.
What, so when, when do you meet with us to, will you be meeting with us at the beginning individually for our?
Yeah, that's part of the, the project management aspect of the project, to sit down and, you know, once we've got these reports available, we'll be reaching out to the commissioners and providing updates along the way.
You know, if we can cut each year in half, that could be a good thing. There's a prize at the end.
I've got an idea of how we can do it quicker than that, if you just turn it over to me and I'll make the decision.
No, 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 no.
It's a process.
So moved?
Y'all need to go to some ULI meetings first.
And public hearings. But it's all a process, and I understand, and I think we all do. It just takes time, and, and we need to hear from the public as we're moving forward.
And, and you know, guys, because when you change the comprehensive plan, you change people's land use underneath it, and there has to be a dialogue, right?
That's why there needs to be the public involvement piece.
But you've got to know both sides.
Yeah, so, you know.
Yeah, and there's a lot of errors and omissions.
Yeah.
If you, if you did not notice those.
There's things that this board done in.
No errors and omissions in the, what we've seen so far.
About 10 or 12 years ago, and, and some areas that, that they didn't think it would look like it does today, and some of those things are going to have to change, so. It looks different after you go through a 10-year period, so, what you're planning for the future.
Ms. Chairman, Nikki and I have to go. We have a 12 o'clock meeting, we have to go with other constitutionals, but again, there needs to be corrections. And I know Andy sent you those, guys, because those corrections that, I mean, they had, they had the population of, of the county, I think, at like 530? Or is it right? Let me, let me see the number. I mean, it wasn't even correct. 528. So it, so, and there, and the backup item, it says the county's 2020 estimated population was 528,000. Well, it's not even, it's not, it's not even right. It's not even close to being right. Now, we're using a census of 553, which we don't, I don't even think that's correct.
I think you ought to add another 100.
I, I'm with you. So we've already started off with this comprehensive plan of literally having errors.
Ms. Chairman?
Commissioner, Mr. Chair, I would suggest that we table this for now, we'll go back, and we'll come back and brief you individually with where we are, where we're going, and what the plan is, get feedback from you directly, and then bring you back something at a later date to kind of wrap up all those discussions.
Ms. Chairman, one quick comment?
I think that got fixed.
But I've got a list of things that aren't right.
Yeah. Ms. Chairman, just one, Ms. Chairman, just one quick comment, something that Terry and I talked about yesterday. When you look at the map on page 44 of the regional congestion, the intersection of 52 and 41, now, if you go to the east in the morning, it's backed up from Sun Coast Parkway all the way to 41. If you come from the east coming over, especially in the afternoon, I don't know about the morning, it's jam-packed for three or four sets of lights.
Morning's not as bad.
It, right, and then, and on this map though, it's not even listed as a congested area. So if that is not in, is not good, we've got an issue.
Which one's that?
52 and 41.
As far as the construction right now, we'll fix it.
No.
The six lanes and four lanes, 52 and 41.
But, but on the map, it says no problem.
Because it's, the assumption was the contracts that are underway right now that have been executed are going to fix that, because they bring four lanes on 41 to 52, and six lanes on 52 to 41. And so that will resolve that interchange, and then we have the one gap left to fix. So that's probably why that's not there.
Okay.
That's why it's not, because they planned in the very near future to be complete. So that'll straighten all that up.
Good.
I also think when the Sun Coast and Ridge opens up, that's going to help all those intersections.
What's your, you want to go continue with, let her tell us?
We can continue this afternoon if you want. Commissioner, I would just say, let's take this back, and we'll come back and brief each one of you individually, gather the information from you, the feedback from you, revise that and move forward with year two. That may include some schedule adjustments to accelerate.
Right, okay.
We don't need to come back this afternoon.[1773.68]